Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the City of Joliet Regular City Council Meeting, the City Council, Tuesday, July 15, 2014. We have invocation by Jim Hallert, after which he will lead us in the pledge to the flag. Will all rise, please?
Three more of these and you're gonna be a deacon.
Let us pray. Lord, grant wisdom on this group and may they make the decisions that are in mind for the people of the city. Keep us all in good health, keep us all in good spirits, and bless these proceedings. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call, Mayor Gerani.
Here.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Here.
Councilman Girl.
Here.
Councilman Hug.
Here.
Councilman McFarland.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Here.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Here.
Councilman Turk.
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Mayor?
Yes.
If we could possibly move up proclamations after the committee reports, that would be recommended.
Move the -- say that again?
Move our -- move the proclamations right after the committee reports.
Well, if -- yes, we can do that.
They're ready now?
Yes.
Then how about before the committee reports?
I was teasing your honor. I said he would say read this and I got one contact in, so we'll -- Our proclamation, whereas equal access to housing, transportation, and goods and services has been a long fundamental expectation for all of Joliet and American citizens, whereas Joliet, Illinois is one of the fastest growing cities in Will County with a population over 147,000 and has thousands of people with disability, seniors, and any number of other individuals who have benefit from the more housing options, increased public transportation, and improved accessibility. Whereas the citizens continue to experience barriers in these three categories, local businesses lose untold profits because of the lack of accessibility. Whereas accessibility advocates are focusing their efforts on the following priorities to address what they see as necessary to promote compliance within the community through leadership by the Accessible Will County Campaign, encourage constructions of more housing options, creations of more transportation options, voluntary efforts to remove structural barriers within local businesses, increase compliance of the laws requiring equal access by persons with disabilities, and provide resources to individuals involved in creating and utilizing that access. Whereas Accessible Will County Campaign, which is a broad-based network of community leaders, disability advocates, and business community representatives, we seek to join forces with the City of Joliet in addressing the immense challenge of ensuring full and total accessibility for all citizens. Now therefore, I, Thomas Gerani, Mayor of the City of Joliet, and on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby proclaim that the week of July 20 through July 26, 2014 be designated as Accessibility Awareness Week in the City of Joliet and in honor of the 24th anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act and to continue our efforts toward increasing housing options, transportation, and accessibility for all citizens dated July 15, 2014, signed by the Honorable Mayor Thomas Gerani.
Pam, Kevin's one.
Thank you, Mayor Gerani and councilpeople. We appreciate this recognition and I would encourage the city to continue its efforts to make sure that all the power facilities are accessible to all Joliet residents. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, citizens with disabilities lost a huge advocate this last week. Valerie Brew Parish passed away suddenly last week. She was a wife, a mother, a teacher, an advocate, a grandmother, and she was very involved in the Citizens with Disabilities movement. And we've lost a great friend and a great person, but I know she's up in heaven looking down on this day because she would have been here with her husband, Rick. So I'd like to just say our sympathies to the family, but I know she's looking down on us and she's smiling.
Mayor, I think I need a motion and a vote for the agenda, the approval of the agenda.
I move, is amended.
Second.
And it's been motioned and seconded to approve. The agenda is written with the moving up the proclamation. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion passed. And next we have the consent agenda items. Approval of minutes. It is recommended the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on June 30 and of the regular meeting held on July 1, 2014 stand approved as recorded. Council memo 327-14, regular payroll for May 30 through June 12, 2014, $3,111,841.41 and vehicle allowance for June 20, 2014, $13,935.71. It is recommended said payroll be approved. Treasures dispersments for June 2014, $19,020,633.83. Regular claims for June 2014, $3,009,935.63. Treasures report for May 2014. It is recommended the treasures dispersments, regular claims, and treasures reports be received and placed on file. Council memo number 328-14, position vacancies. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to fill one police patrol officer position and one public safety dispatcher one position with subsequent vacancies. Council memo number 329-14 is the 2015 roadway reconstruction program. It is recommended program be approved. The administration be authorized to establish special service areas for the project and the administration be authorized to pursue plans and advertise for bids for the project. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Hearing done.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye, with the exception of those pertaining to my employer.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
And we have the council committee reports. We have the public service committee.
Your Honor, the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Betty Gavin and Councilwoman Jim McFarland and myself met yesterday afternoon in the executive conference room at 4:45 to review the contracts, change orders, pay estimates, final payments, and various ordinances and resolutions, found them to be in order, recommend their approval. We also had a presentation by RJN Group on the 2014 sanitary sewer investigations and rehab program. And they are focusing right now on four areas of the city that has had excessive sewer backup in their basements. And those areas are Kerwin Estates, the Belmont Interceptor and Edge Creek Cliff Station, Haldeman Terrace, and Mayfair, Clearwater Springs, and Aspen Falls. They will all be tested for violation of sanitary connections or stormwater connections into the sanitary sewer along with other problems that will rectify the situation.
Thank you.
I show no other reports. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinances, Council memo number 331-14, ordinance approving a special use permit to allow operation of a thrift store at an existing commercial strip located at 100 and -- I'm sorry, 116 East Jackson Street. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been second -- motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 332-14, ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a temporary staffing agency located at 2405 Essington Road. It is said, recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Yeah, quickly.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, you'd probably be the best to answer it. I'm just curious, why do we require a special use for this type of business's office?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and councilmen, that's a very interesting question. We had a discussion about that at staff the other day. It dates back to when temporary staffing became more prevalent in the city as a -- just a business. And what we encountered were employees or potential prospective employees would congregate around a business early in the day hoping to get work for that day. And then if work was not available, those that didn't get the work would kind of hang around and loiter around some of the downtown businesses and interfere with other businesses nearby. And so the thought at the time was while temporary staffing is an appropriate business model, some additional oversight is necessary to make sure that they will operate as good neighbors.
Thank you.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Very informed, aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolutions. Council memo number 334-14, a resolution appropriating funds for the West Bevan Drive Douglas Street North End Roadway Improvements Project 2014. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
None.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 335-14, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation and subsequent ordinances associated with the U.S. Route 30, I-55 through Illinois 59, roadway improvements project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 336-14, resolution appropriating funds associated with an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the U.S. Route 30, I-55 through Illinois Route 59 roadway improvements project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 337-14, resolution authorizing a representative to sign Illinois Environmental Protection Agency loan documents for Displanes River Combined Sewer Overflow Tunnel Project, U.S. Route 6 Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, and East Side Waste Water Treatment Plant Influent Pump Station and Screen Replacement Project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 338-14, a resolution granting permanent easement to Commonwealth Edison for a city-owned property at 1209 West Parkfront. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 339-14, resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 340-14, resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the 2014 MFT roadways resurfacing contract. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Questions?
It's been seconded -- motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo number 341-14, resolution authorizing the sale of 0.706 acres at One York Avenue and the granting of a related permanent easement to the Union Pacific Railroad. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Bids and contracts, award of contracts. Council memo number 343-14, award of contract for the West Bevan Drive Douglas Street North End Roadway Improvement Project 2014. Council memo number 344-14, award contract for the 2014 Hickory Spring Creek Cleaning Project. Council memo number 345-14, award of contract for Haldeman Terrace Phase Two Water Main Relocation Project. Council memo number 346-14, approve of professional services agreement for the 2014 sanitary sewer investigation and rehabilitation program. Council memo number 347-14, purchase a hydraulically operated truck mounted crane for the utilities division. Council memo number 348-14, approve the proposed renewal of property and casualty coverages. It is recommended council memos number 343-14 through 348-14 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
I have a question. Jim Trizna, has anybody ever got this contract other than Greg Dobczak?
Yeah, I think in the past maybe Russ and company may have gotten it. Of recent years, it's been Greg Dobczak. He's kind of a, you know, he's a small operator and he keeps his price down. He knows what to do out there.
Right. How about I?
Motion carried. Amendments, change orders, and payments. Council memo number 350-14, approve change order number two for the new street, Osgood Street Utility Relocation Project. Council memo number 351-14, approve change order number one and payment request number one for the 2014 MFT roadways resurfacing contract. Council memo number 352-14, approve payment for emergency repair of water valve. It is recommended council memos 350-14 through 352-14 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under mayor, we had the proclamation was moved up already, and so any mayor appointments?
I do not have any, sir.
City manager.
I'd like to report on the hydrant situation and review with you currently a bit of a survey that we did on other larger municipalities, and then also show you a quick PowerPoint of our upcoming capabilities, which requires me to move to a podium. So first of all, I want to review with you document I provided at your seat this evening and review with you what we do right now, which is during the warm weather, we, April through September typically, weather permitting, the firefighters are out there testing the hydrants. Now, as they're testing the hydrants, they're always on call for any other emergency. So they'll drop what they're doing and head to that fire scene or ambulance scene, whatever's necessary. So we, right now, open up a hydrant and do what's called flushing a hydrant, which is open up the caps and then open up the valve, which allows the water to flow out of there, and we run it till it's clear, all the rust gets out of it, and then we make sure that those valves are properly lubricated and the caps as well, close it down slowly, and put those caps back on. And if there's a problem of some sort in any one of those things, then that is noted and that moves on to the public utility division for further checking or repair. The other thing that they do is test the flow of the hydrant or the pressure. In other words, they'll put a gauge in that as the water is flowing out, so they know how much water comes out of there. And first of all, let me review with you. When a fire truck pulls up to a fire scene, they hook the truck up to the hydrant, but the hose that is fighting the fire comes off of the apparatus because there's a person who's called the engineer who is regulating the pressure. So it doesn't lift the firefighter off the ground because there's so much pressure. And if they're going to do an interior attack, they can't have too much pressure either because they've got to turn corners and move around. So he's out there regulating the pressure on the truck as the hydrant fills up the truck. And so whenever a truck, when the fire is over, the truck is refilled with 1,000 gallons of water, which is what they typically hold. So en route back to the firehouse, they may get another call, so their apparatus is filled with water if they get dispatched on the way back to the firehouse. So our current goal is throughout the city to test half of the hydrants and then every four years, test the flow. Now, flow really doesn't change unless you're changing the size of the main underground. So every four years, we expect the flow at that hydrant to be the same as it was four years ago, and we're just checking to make sure that that's the case. So we took a look at some of the other comparable communities our size and looked at Naperville, Peoria, Elgin, Rockford, Aurora, and Springfield. Some of them have the water department do it, some of them have the fire department do it. Some have a lot of employees assigned, others don't. Naperville, for example, tested twice a year until they went to Lake Michigan Water and had to start paying for it, and now they don't do it as often. They've got approximately 8,500 hydrants, whereas right now we have 7,535 hydrants in our database. Peoria is privately owned, and the company that runs their water system tests the hydrants every summer. Elgin has their water department do it. They take a look at, they flush them annually and, no, I'm sorry, their goal is to flush all hydrants once every three years. Rockford took over the water department, took over from the fire department a couple years ago. They have about 7,000 hydrants and test a little over 1,000 hydrants, so that's a six-year cycle, every six years. Aurora is on a three-year cycle. Springfield has an unusual situation. They're, they have 7,700 hydrants, and they divide them into priorities. Priority one being schools, hospitals, nursing homes, daycare, so forth, that they test every year. And then priority two are apartment complexes, downtown area, which are every other year. And priority three being residential and isolated industrial areas are every four years. So there's no real pattern that we can take a look at that says is right or wrong or what we should be doing. But what I want to do is share with you now what the department's been working towards and we expect will be fully implemented within the next 60 to 90 days. So if you look at your screen, what we're looking at is a, having a mobile app, and so So if you look at your screen, what we're looking at is a, having a mobile app and so it'll be able to run on an Android, a PC, an iPad, a tablet or a Windows tablet. Our goal is to then have firefighters, will have an iPad and they will have a mini Wi-Fi. They've got a tough book that's mounted in the apparatus and that's got a card in it that communicates wirelessly. And so within so many feet of the apparatus, rather than getting a card for each of the iPads, they will wirelessly communicate to the apparatus, which will wirelessly communicate to City Hall, to the master database. So as they're testing, you can see the red spots on the map here, it'd be the vicinity that they are in and they can locate a specific hydrant where they are working and then they will be able to call up and have a menu of different choices that they can have. And taking for example, what is the current status of this hydrant, they can, they'll have a number of forced choices, whether or not it's in service, it should be out of service, it needs repair. They will make a choice and then that will be immediately entered into the database in real time, which means that as a fire apparatus is being dispatched to a fire scene from their tough book that is in the fire apparatus, they will be able to see the closest hydrant to the fire scene that they've been dispatched to that in real time is operational and identifying the fire hydrant where they were. So the other part of this equation is that the Public Utilities employees who are out in the field making the repairs can also enter this data and in real time say, this hydrant's been fixed. So that if they fix it in the morning and that afternoon, there's a fire in that location, fire truck knows that hydrant's working. Again, this is a joint effort between the fire department and Public Utilities. It'll improve the speed of repair and the biggest thing is the communication, bringing it into real time. It'll confirm all of the hydrant locations throughout the city, have an updated snapshot of conditions at all times and it'll coordinate the work orders that go to Public Utilities and then go back to the fire department in real time. With this system in place, we believe that starting next year, we'll be able to test and flush all of the hydrants in the city every year.
Excuse me, about all of the hydrants or you go out and check all the broken ones?
Nope. Check all the hydrants. And then again, in real time, as these things, as the fire department finds something, Public Utilities employees can be out there and what they do is they basically triage it. They take a look at it and they say, they couldn't get the cap off because it got rusted on. So they, you know, force it open, lubricate it, it's repaired. Others, they inspect and say, wait a minute, we gotta, we need a part, we need to order it and then it gets back in line and a week later, they get out there and they fix it. So that's typically their process. They take care of the easy ones, the easy fixes right away because they can. They figure out what needs to be ordered, they get them ordered and they get out and fix it.
Questions?
Jim, just for clarification, if I recall last meeting, we indicated that we do not test in the summer, but then on the sheet that's given to us, it says April through summer, weather permitting.
Right. Weather permitting is basically oftentimes we experience an excessively dry season and dry season can be as dramatically affecting our mains as freezing in the winter time. The soil will heave and break the mains because they get so dried out. And our concern is when our water supply, the aquifers get depleted that, and we tell people they can't even water their lawns and then we've got a hydrant blowing water into the street and people see this and their pressure isn't very high, obviously, when we're doing that. So we will cut back in those weeks that there's not enough rain. This season, obviously, we've had lots of rain. So we'll be continuing, you know, even if it stopped raining tomorrow, we'd be able to continue probably for another month if we had a month of no rain because the soil conditions are such that it'll allow us to continue that testing.
So maybe it's a misstatement to state that we test only in the spring and fall?
Right, right. The point being, right.
I just wanted to clarify.
Right.
All right, thank you. Second question, this is great that we're finally moving into the 2014 with a system that's digital and the left hand and the right hand know what's going to happen. I guess still my concern, and just to go back, the mayor made a comment, you're saying starting in 2015, we're going to be able to annually flush all 7,000 hydrants citywide?
Yes, right.
Okay. What are we doing currently to identify the hydrants that are not operational to put them into this database? And I get, and again, my initial comments has nothing to do with the flushing of the hydrants. It's knowing which hydrants work and do not work. We paid a staff member about $53 an hour to drive around for two months to look for fire hydrants, what rings on them, so they could then be put on a list to be fixed. I have a problem with that. We're moving in the right direction here, but how are we going to take the out of service hydrants and update that information into this database without testing all the hydrants citywide?
Well, if next year, calendar year, we are testing every hydrant, every hydrant will be in our system and will show the constant updated stats. There has been communication issues in terms of information getting from testing back into our system manually and then communicated to Public Utilities. And in the example of the employee that you mentioned, he was on duty disability and so he had a light duty assignment that would keep him working because either he sat at home and got paid or he, we found a functional job for him to do. And so in this case, that's what we wanted to do is try and keep this list updated and so, but by, it points out the deficiencies in the system that we currently have, quite frankly. And we recognize that and that's why we're moving to this new system.
So until next year, we still won't have a accurate count of which hydrants?
We will be working on the list and doing it the way we do today and firefighters will be out there testing this year and communicating the information and we'll try and improve that process right now, but there may be some that slip through. And that's why, and we recognize that and that's why we went out and got this program.
Third question, once the information's logged in here, what type of timeline in terms of repairs? We have some, since the article in the newspaper, I've been contacted, staff's been contacted, other council members have been contacted of hydrants that have been out for years, five to 10 years.
And that should never happen. We have three different types of hydrants. There are probably several different parts on them that break and you may be able to get one part in a day and it may take two weeks for another part in a different hydrant. But we will develop a schedule which we think we can communicate to the public that's a maximum time period that we believe we can meet that goal every time for all hydrants. I want to get this process in place so that we can better gauge and set that as a objective within the department that we can live up to and strive for.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. So how many hydrants do we currently have that are non-functional that we know of?
I don't have the total list, but I think it's about 190 hydrants.
And these will be fixed over the next two weeks, four weeks?
Well.
We're aware of them. We don't need to wait for the electronic program.
No, that's true, yeah. But two weeks from now, there may be still another 190 other hydrants.
No, I'm just talking about 190 we know about Elgin.
Right.
You know, are we going to be knocking those out?
Yeah.
I was disturbed to hear.
Again, they're, like I said, it's kind of a triage. They'll look at the list and say, you know, the fire department just couldn't get the caps off, so let's go around and get those and, because they're quick, easy fixes and get them back into service. And then they'll go to the next level of difficulty and the goal is every day to get as many back in service as possible. But they aren't going to say, well, this one's really tough, we'll ignore it for weeks, you know? They will have a schedule that they have to get to so many hydrants and figure out what the problem is, what kind of repair needs to be made or sometimes it's complete replacement. We are looking at purchasing a crane for a tool truck so that this crane can, you know, it's mounted right in the back of the tool truck because when you install a hydrant, you're not just doing what you see, but you're doing that six-foot stem that's underground right down to the main. So it's quite heavy and you need a crane to swing it over, get the old one out, put the new one in.
Because the way I look at it is, for the ones we're aware of that aren't working, the fire department has tested them, obviously. That's how we know they're not working.
That's right.
So my question is, it's not a testing issue. Let's get them fixed.
Right.
We have some kind of schedule based on those 190. I mean, we talking six months, we talking, I mean, I had heard after our last meeting, the next day, Water and Sew Department sent somebody out to fix a residence hydrant that was broken for six years. Now, if we can get it done 24 hours later because of the political pressure, the heat of the meeting, let's get the other 190 done. I mean, we, you know.
I agree.
This could hurt. So do we have a schedule from the Water and Sew Department? That's my question.
Right. I don't have that schedule right now, but that's something we need to develop in terms of, and this app will be, increase our efficiency tenfold, I believe.
Now, who's going to be managing the implementation of the software program?
Scott Kinsella is coordinating that with both Fire Department and Public Utilities Department.
I would have assumed that, I wanted to make sure, Scott. And we called it, actually in the description, we call it a snapshot, right? I would like you to work it out so that on a week to week basis, not access to the program itself, but to the map showing those in and out is accessible to every resident who goes in the city site. And if that means buying a patch, we'll buy the patch, you know, we'll discuss it with CTIS, but I will encourage us to buy a patch or whatever we need to do, but I want this available to the public when it goes up. Not to change it, to see it.
Councilman, right now, that application is an internal only application. I'm not 100% sure that we can make a public facing view of that right out of the gate. We'll look at that and we can follow up and let you know what we can do.
Well, let's figure it out through the CTIS committee. Let's not wait till it's implemented, let's figure it out now.
Councilman Hug.
Schedule a CTIS committee meeting and let's discuss it and send something to the council.
My experience in prior cities is that Homeland Security does not allow that information available to the public for concerns about terrorism in terms of, you know, contamination of the water supply. So there's a lot of cities that have locks on their manhole covers so that you can't get access into them. So there's a limit to what we can make available to the public, but we'll be sure and check it out.
Yeah, let's make sure. If Homeland Security says that residents can't know about their fire hydrants, then we can't tell them. But I'm not sure how, you know, let's clarify that with them.
We'll see.
And then one last question. This is more out of curiosity. I did catch during the presentation at Naperville, which is smaller than us slightly, how do they have so many hydrants compared to us, you know, an additional 1,000? Is that because of their commercial development?
It could be. 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 Or, you know, the water system loops around, there can be any number of reasons.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You know, Jim, as far as I know, there's probably three ways to find out if a hydrant isn't operable and that's, you know, through our own inspection, through if an engine company pulls up and finds it inoperable, that's another way. Or just by looking at it, if it's hit by a car, if it's damaged or whatever, you know.
Certainly.
So, I mean, once this system is up and running, I mean, we could test this hydrant, which I think is a great plan, but we could test this hydrant and the next day it goes out, we won't know for another year until, if that's the case, correct?
That's potentially true.
I mean, that could happen, but I think once this system that we have that you're recommending is put in place by 2015 or whenever we get it in place, according to what I'm seeing here, it's going to be head and shoulders above other communities as far as the reliability of the hydrants.
We hope so and we do encourage residents, you know, if there's been an accident, a hydrant hit and we may not know about it. So we encourage them to contact us via our website or call in and make sure that we know that and we've got it on our, in our system for repair.
I commend you and the chief and his people in putting this plan together. I think it's a great plan.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Jim, I agree with Councilman Turk. I think what has been proposed is about the best possible way to handle this issue. So I compliment you and staff for putting this together. I also think Councilman McFarland deserves compliments for bringing this, or pushing this matter forward. I mean, there's no secret that what you're proposing largely contradicts what we were told two weeks ago as our current process. So I think Councilman McFarland helped identify a problem, maybe with the help of some people in the media and he pushed this forward and I think we have, what is the solution to a problem? And, you know, I have to say, Mayor, you being a former fireman, I think you would know as well as anybody how important having serviceable fire hydrants are, not just to the public or to people's property, but to the safety of the firemen themselves who have to fight the fire. I do think it's disappointing that it's been able to deteriorate to this level, but it sounds like we have a feasible plan going forward. So thank you, Jim.
Just a comment. I do know the importance of hydrants and I have all the faith in the world in chief formals and the fire department. There's no way that all the hydrants are going to be fixed all the time. This is a great step forward, there's no question. We're up with the computers and so forth, but as I stated before, as I stated before, 22 years on the department, even though there may be hydrants out, that first engine in has 1,000 gallons of water and would drop that tank and the next engine in runs a supply line to that engine and I've never seen that first engine in run out of water before that second engine in had a supply line to it. So I understand the importance, okay? But every hydrant is not going to be fixed all the time. Do we have to get to that? Absolutely. But it's not going to work that way as Councilman Turk just said. They may check a hydrant today, tomorrow it may be out, something may go wrong in it, the stem might break, the cap maybe freezes and rusts and it won't come off, so it could happen.
Just one more comment. Jim, Rockford's on a six-year cycle.
Yes.
Are we aware, you know, and I know technology is different now with the engines and, you know, like the chief had said before, he pulls up with 1,000 gallons and there's another truck there with another 1,000 gallons and sometimes that's more than enough to fight the fire. Has there ever been a situation in Rockford where they've lost the building because of a hydrant's outage? Are you aware of that at all or?
No, we don't know the answer to that and.
Six years is a long time.
And let me expound on the mayor's point as well. I understand the Empress Casino burned and we couldn't get that fire out and that's not because the fire truck wasn't getting enough water to run that hose, it's that one hose and that one hydrant, there wasn't enough water on the scene to put out that fire and that was the issue. Not that there weren't enough, you know, that the truck didn't work or the hose didn't work or that the hydrant didn't work, it's just there wasn't enough water and they had to truck it in.
Jim, two more examples, was the ice skating rink in Inwood? That hydrant worked, they didn't have enough water. When the Elks burned down, the same thing, they had a draft out of the pool out at the Elks, so it wasn't a matter of the hydrant's being broke, it was just there wasn't enough water there.
Mayor?
Yeah?
I just wanted to clarify, I think everybody here has confidence in our firefighters when they're out there testing. I think everybody here has confidence in our firefighters when they're out there testing. I have no problem with the testing. I think I'm going to thank, as Councilman Otterkirk said, Councilman McFarland for bringing this forward. We have a plan. We make sure we keep our nose to the grindstone. It's no secret, I think anybody that's aware of this in this room, the Insurance Services Office requires, for best rating, testing once a year. Now, how have we been applying to the ISO when we are, when we're rated, Jim? Are we putting down that we're testing once a year? Are we putting down that we're testing? Because my, again, my focus is not on the testing. The testing is effective. The firemen do a good job testing. I want to know why we're sitting on 190 fire hydrants, some of which are four, eight, 10 years out of service. That's inexcusable.
I don't know. We haven't needed 10 years out of service.
We're always truthful in the ISO questionnaire. But the ISO questionnaire has hundreds of questions that they're asking and they're by group. And so you may be low in this area and high in the other, and it's not going to change your overall rating. So.
Just, you know, let's stick to the facts. I don't think we got any hydrants that are eight years or 10 years out of service. Chief or Jim, is Jim Egan? Do we have any that are eight years out of service or 10 years out of service?
I do have to, you know, say that the list, as we would get a list from the Fire Department, we would, you know, send it out to the water crews to go out and service the fire hydrants. Sometimes, you know, the, they'll come back, the crews would come back saying, in their opinion, that it needs to be dug up and replaced. Those hydrants, we would take a look at the overall nearby fire hydrants, make sure that, you know, there's adequate protection based on the 350-foot spacing. And then those hydrants would be put on a list to address. I don't think there's locations out there that are 10 years old. But some of those locations, when we do have to dig them up and do a complete replacement on them, those do get deferred until we have enough to address or we can address them with our crews.
The one thing that I learned in this process, though, is that there are some hydrants in the city that don't have enough flow based on the size of the main and that it's too close to other hydrants that we put on do not use. And the Fire Department will never use it. And it'll just sit there, totally unfunctional. And we're never going, there's no repair you can do outside of increasing the size of the main, digging up the street to make that hydrant usable. So that's the only case where you may say, okay, this hydrant doesn't work, and it hasn't for 10 years.
It works, but it don't supply enough water.
It doesn't supply enough, so they don't use it.
Yeah.
To answer your question about the 10 years of a hydrant out of service, I believe the entire council received an email on July 7th, including yourself, at 11:14 a.m. from a resident at 1212 Oregon Ave who indicated that they reported their hydrant being backed into by a vehicle. And it took 10 years to finally have this individual to email us, and this was the hydrant that Mr. Hug was mentioning, that staff went out there the next day and repaired it within 20 minutes, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe the homeowners here this evening, they could vouch and verify this email to us. So yes, there is hydrants that have been out of service for a long period of time.
That was out of service 10 years, Bob? Eight years?
Eight years.
Okay. Was it reported?
The answer was yes, it was reported.
Yes.
Because, Jim, you bring up another interesting question. So this is news to me. We have streets that have such small mains, are those houses that have no hydrants that we're going to plug into?
Well, hopefully it's not a length of street where I'm sure that the department, that the Public Utilities Department makes sure that there are workable fire hydrants within certain distances. There's a maximum distance between houses that's allowable under ISO that we meet that criteria.
500 preferred, 1,000 maximum.
Yeah.
So that didn't answer my question. If you say a main is too small, I don't think we have a big main in front of this house, a little main in front of that house, a big main in front of this house. You have an entire street on one main. So we don't have, what are we doing to mitigate this?
Well, I'd have to defer to Public Utilities Director.
We identify those areas and we're aware of the areas where, you know, typically, you know, looking at a street and all the fire hydrants are red in a specific area. You know, we do system improvements, trying to increase the water flow to those neighborhoods. And depending on, you know, what kind of overall improvement, ultimately, you know, we would look to go down that street and replace those mains, upsize them to get more adequate standard. A lot of the older neighborhoods, you know, were built with six-inch water mains. The minimum size by today's standards is eight-inch. And when we, you know, look at trying to deliver more, higher volume of fire flow, we're looking at a 10-inch or even a 12-inch water main. So the neighborhoods, you know, that have six-inch, you know, we look at dual feeds and the age of the water main. There's a lot of different factors that come into play. And we do look at those. Our highest priority on what we place on water main is mains that fail on a regular frequency and have a high failure rate. But we do look at areas also just based on adequate supply in that area.
Oh, can we, Jim, if you would, I would appreciate it. At some point, put together as comprehensive as a list as you can for the neighborhoods that have these six-inch mains. So that as a council, along with staff, we can start putting together some kind of a five-year plan, a three-year, whatever plan, a budget. Certainly for you to have your guys do it, you need a budget. Otherwise, you've got to do it slower. I get that. Can you put it together so we know which neighborhoods have these types of outdated difficulties?
Yeah, we've been working on a comprehensive plan.
Because I understand, I mean, I would not want to drive a $500,000 piece of equipment up to an old hydrant that's going to run dry and burn up the pump. You know, I get that, chief. Not to mention the fact it's not going to move enough water to really do much good, right? So we need to mitigate that on the Public Utilities side.
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know, Jim or Chief Formos can, based on what Mr. Hug just told us about there are some hydrants that will never be used, why keep them? Why do we not just get rid of them and cap them for, you know, down the road when we want to make bigger mains? I mean, why, you know, why have them there if they're not working and you're, or if they are working, we're never going to use them because they're too small?
I'll comment on that. You know, the fire hydrants serve a dual purpose, not only for fire protection in the area, but also, you know, for doing, you know, routine flushing of the mains. And then also, we want to have fire hydrants at high points. So if there's air in the pipes that we can flush the air out of the lines, so there's other, you know, routine maintenance purposes that we want to keep those fire hydrants.
Okay, that's good to know because I know I'll get that question. So you just answered it for me. Thank you.
Anybody else?
New business, not for final action.
Excuse me.
Eddie?
Anything?
Nothing this evening.
It's new business, right?
Yeah.
Jim, can we take a look at this? I think we all received an email from our Public Works Department that essentially, which I would refer to as top shelf, how did I write that down? You know, the roads and streets that really need immediate attention for resurfacing may amount to somewhere just north of $5 million, 5.2 million. It's a big number. But with an $8 million surplus from last year, and we certainly need to track it this year because there's some other, you know, options based on that, but I will get ahead of myself. We need to address this 5.2 million dollars in repairs sooner rather than later. If we don't have the money to do it, we've got to stretch it out over three to six years. Then, okay, then I guess we have to stretch it out. But if we do have the money to do it currently, I think we need to expedite it. So can you make that a project to see what we can do through the Finance Committee? To address that, especially leading into the budget season, to try to expedite those repairs for those folks that have been waiting so they don't have to wait three, four, or five years to get those streets done?
Certainly.
And do we have any update, Mayor, on the Displanes Gardens IDA rejection?
Just to the fact that they got their request turned down and they're going to reapply.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mayor? Yeah, I've been inundated, and I'm sure others on the council have been also, with complaints the last couple of weeks about fireworks in our city. And I know before, at the end of the last meeting, before the Fourth of July, we talked about it. I think we're at a tipping point where I think we need to actively or proactively take law enforcement measures regarding fireworks. And Chief Bennett, I know we've talked about it before the meeting. I think you're prepared to make some comments, and I'd like to respond and make some suggestions after that.
Yes, we did try to take a proactive approach this year. We understand in recent years fireworks calls seem to be getting more and more prevalent. I think the state as a whole is experiencing, and I don't think it's unique to Joliet. I've talked to some of our neighboring communities. They're experiencing as well. I believe there was some legislation earlier this year to actually consider legalizing the sale of fireworks, like our neighbors doing, Wisconsin, Indiana is possibly an opportunity to tax it. That didn't go through, but I think it shows a level of acceptance in our community, which we're not all happy with. Obviously, there's a danger that comes along with fireworks. There's an issue of safety that we, of course, want to make sure we maintain a safe community. One of the proactive measures that we took this year is we sent out officers to some of the addresses that we had problems with last year. And we did basically a warning ahead of time. We went on the days leading up to the Fourth and told them that, you know, we realize we can't arrest everybody, we can't write citation to everybody for violating the laws, but because we have a history of problems at your particular house, we will be arresting you for it. And we were successful. One of the residents actually told our officer, I appreciate the heads up, and I'm going to take, he had the tube set up in the back of the yard to launch his fireworks already. So he took those tubes out and his fireworks, he said he was taking the fireworks to his cousins in Indiana, which is fine. We don't want in our community. I went on the radio on WJL Friday morning and tried to emphasize the importance of safety. I highlighted the fireworks display that was, that Memorial Stadium was hosting that evening. I also highlighted the Slammers fireworks display that evening and tried to direct our residents towards the legal fireworks shows that I think we all agree we enjoy at that time of year. But as far as the calls for service, you know, during, we prioritize. Fireworks are, of course, a nuisance. They're difficult, you know, especially when they get later at night. We had 316 calls for service, between 2:00 in the afternoon and 3:00 in the morning, 127 of which were fireworks-related. That's down from last year, though. Last year, we had 150 during that same time period. Fireworks were a problem. They're starting to escalate, leading up to, we saw when the recession hit, people didn't have money. We were at an all-time low. We had 75 calls that year. But last year, we had double that. So they are increasing in popularity. I'm glad to say that they were down this year. I like to think that it's from the efforts of us educating the public and attempting to target some of the known offenders. But like I said, as a whole, the entire area is experiencing a problem with acceptance of the fireworks in the community.
In response, you know, I was a policeman for 10 years and I know I worked Fourth of July most of those years. I generally was an eastside car. I worked for Lieutenant Pedersen for most of that time. And for whatever reason, the east side seemed to get less calls than the west side. The majority of the firework calls come from the west side. But when I left in 2003, it was rare if officers would make an arrest. There were compliance tickets that were issued. And I don't remember, other than on search warrants, I don't remember an arrest being made, an actual physical arrest where someone was detained and brought to the station. Jeff Clyman, I don't know if we have a local ordinance on fireworks or if we simply just follow the state statute. I think the problem, chief, it isn't the kids with bottle rockets or firecrackers. I think everyone would agree, I think most people would agree. But you have high-grade explosives that are going off in neighborhoods and going off at really unacceptable hours, at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and not just on the Fourth of July, but on days leading up to it and days afterward. And I think from the gauge that I'm getting from the public, people are tired of that. And I don't blame them. I think it's unacceptable. If you aren't going to do something reasonably, and I know it's illegal, but and show no regard for the people around you with children or pets or people that have to work the next morning, I would encourage our department to become more proactive. I would like to see, if possible, an ordinance with some real teeth in it. I'd like to see fines levied. And I know the police have the discretion on who they're going to arrest and who they're not going to. And I'd like to see jail time. And I think what we would see if we implemented this is much like, I think your numbers would show what happens now on St. Patrick's Day or New Year's Eve or Black Wednesday with DUI roadblocks, which never occurred when I was a policeman. They happen now, and I think the public has gotten the message that some behavior, although everybody did it for years, went out drinking on New Year's Eve, it's not going to be tolerated. And I think you've seen a result from your efforts. So I would encourage you or the legal department to try to come up with a plan next year to try to address this. And it's not a criticism, it's just a realization that what we're doing isn't stopping this problem at all.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for information of the council, back in 2008, the mayor and city council, sitting at that time, modified the ordinances to incorporate state laws regarding fireworks. Illinois, as you know, is a very restrictive state. You can barely burn a mat in this state legally. And what the state prohibits, the city prohibits. So the ordinance, I think, is there. Now, under the Illinois Constitution, the city cannot create a jailable offense for an ordinance violation. It can create a misdemeanor, which is a, another legal step higher than an ordinance violation. And the police department would then be able to enforce violations as a criminal misdemeanor. I think they can do that now, though, under the state statute. The rubber will hit the road, though, at the courthouse. They'll, and by that, I mean, not only the judges, but the state's attorneys. Because the state's attorneys will have to make prosecution recommendations about the appropriate penalties. But as far as our ordinances go, you can be fined up to $750. And right now, the officer could decide, based on the severity of the situation, you know, the extent of prior fair warnings, to charge it as a state criminal offense or to use a, you can make a physical arrest under the ordinance now and book someone at the station if the workload of the day will allow that. Or you can use the compliance ticket process, which currently has a $150 fine for an offense like that. So that's what we have now. And, you know, it's certainly a fair subject for further discussion.
Anybody else? Comments? Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. Not much. I'd just like to remind or invite everyone out Thursday evening. We're having a community meeting for, basically, I guess initially for the residents around the east side wastewater plant. Jim Egan has offered to come out and kind of inform some of the residents that kind of missed the news beforehand. And so they, I'm inviting them out Thursday. That was kind of the main topic of the evening for this Thursday evening at 6 o'clock. I guess I should tell you the time, huh? 6 o'clock at the All-Nation Church at 503 Water Street. And this is for all residents of the city if you want to come out, especially District 5 residents, if there's any other concerns or information you seeking or want to give concerning your neighborhood. But again, the main purpose and the reason we were happening in that area was because of the east side wastewater plant, what the city and, along with the EPA is doing there. And again, Jim Egan has, will be out, right, Jim? You still coming? So again, we're inviting everyone out Thursday evening at 6 o'clock at the All-Nation Church, 503 Water Street. Thank you.
Sure.
No comment.
Chair?
No comment.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Just like to invite the residents out to the Nationwide Series NASCAR race this weekend. So support our local venue if you enjoy NASCAR.
I'll just briefly mention, I unfortunately, family was out of town Sunday. I know there's several people involved locally from the Fire Department. I know Matt Fleck and his wife, Mrs. Fleck, are the two of the leaders for the Pink Heels Tour, which is a supportive of breast cancer victims and their families. Am I correct, chief? It went fantastic. Yes?
Yes.
Mike, I believe you, Bob, you guys were there?
Yes.
Was there a lot of people there?
Yes, it was a great turnout.
I just want to say thank you to Matt and all the firemen who did that. And when they unveiled the first pink cop car now. Am I right? I saw that online.
It was a Fire Department car, I'm sure.
It was what?
It was, I saw it. It was a Ford, I think, but.
Okay, but kind of like a Chiefs car.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of pink.
Well, fantastic, fantastic thing that they did. We had a really close friend of ours died less than a year ago from breast cancer, the mother of one of our children's good friends. So, you know, thanks to the whole Pink Heels Tour thing.
Chair, no comment, Chair.
I'd like to sort of give a great salute to. I'd like to sort of give a great salute to the neighborhood councils, those residents that come together monthly in their prospective neighborhoods, and they talk about the issues and concerns, and then they move that to a different agenda and bring it right here and put it on our desk. And so if it were not for them, some of these things we would miss, or some things would go under. So hats off to the neighborhood councils, those neighborhood action committees, your watch committees. Please continue to meet, continue to get involved, and to continue to let us know what's going on so that we can certainly get in there and try to fix some things. I think with Councilman McFarland identifying a gap, and then with staff being right on it, they brought back a solution. These are the kind of things, it takes all of us working together. So we're not out here fighting against anybody, we're fighting for you. So thank you so much, neighborhood councils, our watch groups, and all of you that get involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to apologize to Sandra and Matt Fleck. I RSVP'd I was going to go, but I had a surprise birthday party, and then I went to the Greek picnic, and I was on my way out to, and it started raining, so I didn't make it. But I heard they had a great crowd, this is the first one I've missed that they've had out there. Lastly, Thursday is the first downtown car show, starts at 5:00. Come on down, we've got some DJs, and there'll be food and some refreshments. That's all I have.
Mayor, I have a request for closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Some, second.
It's been motioned in second to go into closed session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, land acquisition or conveyance, pending or threatening litigation, after which the meeting will be adjourned. Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Otterkirk?
Aye.
Mayor Gianni?
Aye.